A special meeting of November 21st, order of the Tulare Local Healthcare District Board of Directors. Thank you all for coming. This is getting great to see so many interested people at each of our meetings. This meeting, hopefully, some, rather than dealing with stress, we're hopefully turning the corner, we can start talking about some positive things. We'll see how the meeting goes, but we're looking forward to better times ahead. First better thing is the swearing in of our fifth member, so I'll be a complete board. At the meeting of November 14, Stephen C. Harrell was unanimously appointed to the District One position, vacated by the resignation of Richard Torres. And so tonight, it's becoming tradition to have Superior Court Judge Walter Corelik help us with the swearing in. And each time, we've been able to choose who we wanted, and I think for the last three times, it's been Judge Corelik. So, the judge is with us again tonight, so Judge, it's your floor. I don't know if I need this, but we'll give it a try. Anyway, good evening, everybody. Like the chairman said, it's nice to see a good crowd of people here for another milestone in the progress that hopefully is going to be achieved very soon to open up our hospital again. It's always nice to come and swear somebody in to a commission or a board. That's something that's an important responsibility. But it's always especially nice if you know the person personally. And I've had the pleasure of knowing Mr. Harrell for many years. We were, I was trying to figure out whether I've been doing related stuff longer than him earlier this evening, and we're pretty close, actually. He was in law enforcement, various law enforcement positions for 32 years, and he did my job for, I think, 37 now, so I'm a little ahead of him. But anyway, we've had a lot of contact over the years, and I dealt with a number of cases when he was active in law enforcement work, and he had a very distinguished career, retired, and that didn't stop him from getting involved in other community events. He also reminded me that even before he was in, I believe, law enforcement, he worked as an EMT. They were at the same time, even. Well, okay, maybe he could do that back years ago. And then, he works as a personal trainer, and now, and so he's got a very active interest in health issues, and so it's a great fit for him, I think, to become a board member with the other distinguished people we have on this board, as the hospital progresses to start opening up again. So anyway, oh, by the way, one other thing. The last time I swore somebody in over here, it wasn't very smoothly when I swore her in. But after I swore her in, it took, what, how many months? Two months, two months, the board recognized her. Well, I heard a rumor that it was going to take even longer this time for Harrell, but I'll tell you, I'll give you five minutes to recognize it after I'm finished here, tonight.
Reality, reality is...
What's the reality? There's another legal expert back there.
It took two weeks to get that down. The rail board recognized her immediately.
Ah, okay, thank you, thank you. That was a powerful gesture. Okay, we're going to swear in, so if you'll raise your right hand. I, Stephen Claude Harrell.
I, Stephen Claude Harrell.
Got his name, right? You saw him swear or affirm.
I saw him swear.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully.
Faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Your swearing in. There. Well, he's filling out the paperwork. I want to introduce some, two people who are representing our staff. First is our incoming Chief Executive Officer, Larry Blitz. Larry? And second, our Chief Financial Officer, Dan Hecathor. I won't go into all their experience, but they actually are experienced and competent and very knowledgeable about hospitals, compared to us. All right. Still working on the paperwork? Let me just say, as you know, with them coming, it's great, but we have no administrative staff currently, so if the agenda looks like it has different type faces and two Roman numeral three, that's just to test how long you are paying attention. We're doing what we can. Steve will learn it. Normally, we get a packet from administrative staff for each meeting. We have nobody to do that, so Steve may need a copy of the agenda. Oh, wait, Joe, he can be seated.
It is taking two months.
Welcome, Steve. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes of our past two board meetings, both special meetings, November 7th and 14th.
I make a motion that we accept the board minutes for November 7th and 14th.
It's been moved by Board Member Jamaica and segmented by Board Member Yeteris to accept the minutes and approve them. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The meetings are, the minutes are approved. Next, we have what I think is part of the trend towards positive things, an update on our plan to reopen Evolutions Fitness Center. Oh, I'm sorry. My notes, that's, that's, those are very important, and I made some handwritten notes and covered them up. Yes, we do, we definitely want to hear from the citizens. I know at least one is going to give us an update and exciting about what's going on with the foundation. Jan, you want to start, maybe?
Sure.
Since I asked you to do that.
Yeah, I'm going to do my Zanna White interpretation. A couple of weeks ago, when all of our... Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Use the mic for sending.
But the mic's working fine, Mike.
I'm Jan Smith. I'm the Executive Director of the Hospital Foundation. Really privileged to be here. Here we go again. A couple of weeks ago, when we were in the planning stages, our trustees were meeting, and we kept thinking, as you know, we had to postpone our Festival of Trees event this last year, which was really a tough decision for the trustees to make, but at the time was the right thing for us to do. And come to find out, it's going to open up an opportunity for some really good nonprofits to make a little bit of money this holiday season, so they have an event at Heritage, so please try to support them, because as all nonprofits go, we depend on your help. Anyway, so the trustees said, what can we do to help? This last year, we were the collateral damage, as a lot of you know. We did our best, where we had Summer Jubilee, and that was an interesting evening, was a beautiful turnout, but there were a lot of things, including that special wrestling match fight that took place, so, and then the heat, it's always challenging, but we had a great time. But, you know, given that, we thought, what can we do as a foundation, being mindful of the monies that we need to spend? What can we do to help in this effort to reopen the hospital? So, after a lot of coffee, I was in the office and saying, you know, our community needs to heal, and I'm sure a lot of you would agree with that. There's a lot of things going on in Tulare, but one thing, as a little girl, I was born and raised in this town, I realized, regardless of what happens in our town, we're strong. And we've been through a lot of things in the years that I've lived here, and that was where this was born. Together, we are Tulare Strong. And a lot of you never heard that saying, it takes a village to raise a child. Well, it's going to take a community to open up our hospital again, and it's your hospital. So, we're going to have signs, we're going to start this next week, it's going to run through December, probably a little bit into January. So if you are willing to put a sign up in your home, give me a call at the foundation office, I think you have the number, come by. We are going, right now, tonight, there's a presentation at council, and we're going to get approval to paint the town with green ribbon. Green signifies healing and restoration, so it's our time. Thank you so much.
Other public comments? Nobody came to speak. Joseph? Well, he's coming up, another thing I didn't put on the agenda. The next meeting, the regular meeting, would be tomorrow night, Thanksgiving Eve. We may have a celebration at 5:01 PM tomorrow, but our meeting has been moved to a week later, so the November meeting will be November 29 at 6:30 PM in this room.
Thank you. My name is Joseph Soares, live in the district. A couple of things, I want to thank the board for all their hard work, and Larry, and I'm sorry, I missed your name. Ken, sorry, Ken.
Dan.
Jim, Ken, Jim, something.
Dan.
Dan. I had Larry right. But I want to, I want to speak to your agenda item number four, which should be number five, the Evolutions opening. I want to strongly support that vote. I want the board to seriously consider what's been offered. I think it's a great opportunity for the community to heal. I know a lot of people that have been working very hard on that project, a lot of people are here right now, and they're not looking for a pat on the back, they're not looking for money, they're not looking for thanks or glory. What they're looking for, and that's everybody, we're looking for membership, because Evolutions is a moral victory. We need to, we need a victory in this town, and Evolutions is that victory. And so I ask everybody in, the president of the company excluded, of course, we could all use a few pounds coming off. I'd ask everybody in here in this room to join as a member of the Evolutions, and anybody you know, have them join as Evolutions and a member. We need to make this thing work, we make Tulare Strong. Thank you.
Okay, if not, we'll move on to Roman numeral four or five, if you want to count. The update on the plan to reopen Evolutions Fitness Center, there's a great many people have been working on this for weeks, including meetings this morning and this afternoon, so it's come together with a great deal of volunteer help, and hopefully, we're at a position that we can really set our mind to start some positive things happening for our community. The person that's been coordinating all this is Dennis Maderas, Joseph's partner. And Dennis, if you'd come up and make a presentation for us.
Mr. Harrell?
Yes.
I have my first revision on that. I will recuse myself from this item on the agenda, the reason stated as given last week. Most of you know, my wife has a personal training business. We pay rent to the district to be able to train people at this facility, so I will recuse myself at this point with the option to renew it or to rescind it at any time.
Thank you, Stephen, I appreciate that. Hopefully, Steve, you'll look back on this as a positive, even though you've stepped out of the room. I think we've indicated over the course of the last couple of weeks that several of us, you presented this, Kevin, as my taking the lead, that's not true. There's, there's been Deanne Martin Soares, Joseph, Ken Nunes, and others who have worked through the different foundations, and specifically the Hospital Foundation, in trying to find a way to come together and reopen our portion of it. We're letting all of your brilliant minds come up with the plan and deal with the Department of Public Health as it relates to opening the hospital, but from the standpoint of opening Evolutions, this impacts the whole community, if not the whole city, and there are those of us that felt, if we worked together, we could find a way to come up with a plan that would get Evolutions open as quickly as possible. And within the last 24 hours, if not more, you have been presented with, with a lease agreement to lease the balance of the facility that's not already leased from, by other tenants to a newly formed LLC. Now this, and I am pleased to announce to the community that if this is successful and you approve, everything is falling into place, and our, our goal would, would be achieved to open the doors to Evolutions at 6:00 AM on Saturday. Yes. We also, during the course of trying to put an agreement together, were acutely aware of the fact that it had to be structured in a fashion that would be helpful to the district itself, because you have certain financial needs that need to be addressed, not later, but now. And along that line, the agreement that we presented to you doesn't in any way, with this new company, create a situation to where any profits or financial gain go to us, instead they go to you. So, so this is one of the rare agreements I've ever been a part of drawing, where my client, the company that's been created, is the loser, because we get absolutely nothing, and you get everything. And that's how this has been drawn. And I think if you've read this, even to the point to where our first act as a company, before we even opened the doors, is to write you an advance on rent in the amount of $45,000. Now, that has not been through my efforts or any of the people I've been working for, with, excuse me. It's been through the efforts of who Evo Management Company really is. Even though that's a newly formed company, it's really consists of three entities that have been around for a long time. The first is Tulare Industrial Site Development Foundation, which was formed in 1973, and was intended at that time to create parcels that are ready for economic development in the community, and has been in existence since that period of time. They have assets in excess of a million dollars. They have committed to initially put up $50,000 and committed all the way up to $100,000, as has the Tulare Local Development Company, TLDC. TLDC was formed in the early 80s, I believe, my dates may be off, and their primary purpose was to assist in writing SBA loans for the community, and eventually, they, their duties were, were taken over by another Tulare County entity, and they had achieved through their, the assistance in writing SBA loans, a certain amount of capital, and they have grown that capital to the point to where today, they're worth about a million and a half dollars. And finally, the entity that, that proves again to be Tulare Strong and stepped forward immediately to help its hospital and the district is the Tulare Hospital Foundation, and we want to thank the foundation for the efforts that they have done, and I think all three of these organizations, including the Hospital Foundation, should get a round of applause for what they're doing here. So in this agreement, when we talk about Evolutions Management Company, we're really talking about those three longstanding entities who have contributed over and over again to this community, to the heritage complex, to the community auditorium, they have contributed to the fire station. I could go on and on on the different contributions these entities have made to the community of Tulare for a long period of time. And what they've done here is come together with another opportunity to find a way to do what's in the community's best interest. Each, each entity has agreed to designate a manager for purposes of managing the company. So it's, it, we're going to have three individuals who will be primarily responsible for all decisions that will be made. Those three managers are Paul Atlas for TLDC, Paul is here, Paul, if you could wave your hand, as he vigorously does, he's embarrassed about that. We have Mike Lane, and I didn't see Mike in here, Mike Lane for TISDF, and finally, Patricia Hitlin, I used Patricia, Trish. Make a, if you could wave your hand, so everybody's, she is president of the, of the Hospital Foundation. So you have three respected organizations that will be answering to the board under the terms of this agreement as to what, what is going on and how it's being handled. Under the terms of the agreement specifically, the board will have, as you will note, the board will have the ability to establish an oversight committee, up to five people. Five just happens to be five directors, so how you choose those five is totally up to you, but the books of the company will be totally open for you to view. You can do that at any time. This is no, really, this is no longer than a 30-day agreement. At any time, you as a board can elect to give notice back to the company that, that you want, you want Evolutions back. And all that you're going to be required to do at that time is to reimburse the company what its investment is. So in essence, right now, the maximum amount of money that these three entities are going to contribute, and we've provided a business plan that provides for that, the maximum amount of money is $300,000, and it's based on the figures that have been developed. We fully believe the Evolutions can open and operate for that kind of money, and it's specifically indicated in the agreement that it will not be any more than $300,000 to take it back. Our hope is that Mr. Bliss will be able to come in and run things with the district, and the district will be, in very short order, maybe in 45 days possibly, can come in and say, we have the financing, you've got things in place, it's time for us to take over. If that occurs, I can tell you that these three managers would love nothing better than to turn this back to you, because the efforts that are being given, many of which are volunteer, my partner, myself, Deanne, Kenny, are among that list, as well as the managers, they're, we're, we're ready to give it back to you. Our goal under the lease is specifically to get the doors open, get smooth management, hire employees Friday, open Saturday, and, and try to keep things running appropriately. We have insurance in place, we have openers comp in place. I want to thank Deanne Martin Soares for, for taking the lead on that. We, we have specific limitations we built in, there were some last-minute changes built in that limit the amount of money that can be spent on various items, specifically, no more than, I believe it's $10,000 on air conditioning and heating, $10,000 on the roof, $5,000 on anything else. So that the, the entities are concerned that there isn't, management isn't taking steps to spend a lot of money that doesn't need to be spent at this stage, and the representatives from the district have also indicated the same. We had a meeting later this afternoon with two of your board members to go over some specific items, Xavier Adlin, your president, Kevin Northcraft, Brown Act violation would occur if we had any more than that. But specifically, we wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page as it relates to terms and conditions within the agreement itself. We, we have set out the necessity of transparency, we've set out the terms of being able to get out of the agreement by your side and our side, and we think we, we couldn't have written a more fair agreement for the district when it's so, so totally non-beneficial to, to the company that, that we have, we have created, all of which, all three entities are most concerned about getting Evolutions open, not about anything else. So along that line, I've probably spoken enough. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask them, and I'll do the best I can.
Well, I guess we, me and Kevin, Kevin and I had a little chance to sit down, and this has been worked on for a while, so it's been a...
We look back, it's been worked on since November 4th. I've made two presentations previously in generalities. I left that out. I've been working with your attorneys since early November. After we had this agreement prepared, we then had to clear the agreement with both the Hospital Foundation and TLDC. I'm the attorney for TISDF, so I wasn't worried about whether the attorney for TISDF would approve it. So, we've had, and each entity had to then go back to their own members of the board and have them review it and make sure it was okay. Joseph and I calculated today that each time a change was made or figures were reviewed, at least seven attorneys took a look at it and three accounts, plus a banker, and plus other business people. So this thing's, this thing's been vetted about as much as you could possibly have upon a short period of time. All of these people are people who are, I believe, not speaking about myself, although others talk about that, but all of these people involved in this are respected people in this, in this community who have been recognized as such under the circumstances. So, so I would, I would say that you can rely that we have done the best we can.
Well, I was going to say all that. Yeah, you, yeah, so, I mean, this isn't a surprise to me, we've talked about this for quite a while, and we've had a bunch of different drafts, but this is the final one, and it's pretty rock solid. Kevin, I think grilled you guys pretty good on some of his concerns, but, you know, I think those all stood up, and, you know, there are some people that comment, you know, another company, look, as Dennis said, these are all really good people, trustworthy people in the community, this is not Benzini, this is not, you know, some, did I say his name wrong? Say it like the judge, but this is totally different than what happened with HCCA. So it's, in fact, opposite, this is highly scrutinized, and like he said, I mean, I've seen the emails from the attorneys, so I feel really good about this agreement.
I have a resumption, sir, I want to know what you have to say.
I just saw, when I say this is...
I just saw when I say, this is a beautiful, when the community gets together, and how the leaders get together to help them in the older city. So I was reading the argument, and it's amazing. So it's very well described, and everything, and the financial, and the all the things that we're going to pay, that I want to pay, and also the revenues. So also it's posted in the online, in Facebook, in the hospital page as well, so the public can have access to the agreement as well. So I'm very happy to be part of this movement, and of course, it's not a city, it's a community. Thank you.
I myself would like to say thank you to everybody who was involved in this, to put it together, Paul, all your group, and Mike Lane's group, and Trish, the Hospital Foundation. It's nice that we are Tulare Strong, and this is going to be something great to see that's going to come as we open Evolutions and then as we get ready for our hospital to come together with our CEO and CFO here, as once we get the keys, hopefully tomorrow, and then they can get in there and start assessing everything that needs to be done to get this thing open. I just want to say thank you to all the entities that contributed their revenue to see that this place opens up again and serves the community. Just want to thank you.
Don't comment. I know everything sounds, I don't want to be downer here, but this won't be smooth. I want everybody to know that. There's a lot, we are going into this, and we are, we've come up with figures that have been scrutinized, and, but as you know, there's always surprises when you do something like this. All we can do is, as I've told others, is we're going to do the best we can. We've got people that are volunteering for that for us, and anyway, welcome your comments.
Thank you, Dennis. Couple things I just wanted to point out that opening Evolutions is not the top priority of our district. It's the easier things to accomplish because we're not doing the state certifications. We remain focused on the hospital reopening and the safety that will be provided our community when the emergency room and the other functions of the hospital get open. And in a way, this relieves us of having the day-to-day responsibility for Evolutions so we can focus on the hospital. I may also say that while we're not directly involved in the hiring process, there is a commitment from the new company to look first at our existing employees. And we definitely want to recognize the impact on those innocent victims of this whole process and do what we can for them. In a month, you know, we were thinking, where we were a month ago, we had no money, we had no security, we had no business plan. In a month, we put that together in a 32-page agreement. You, I think, are all aware that the former board had a very one-sided agreement. This is a, I called it a two-sided. It's really not, because it's so favoring the district. It's really very strong, as Dennis pointed out, it is a tremendous thing that leaves all our options open. There are a couple tweaks that they were happy to provide today that made me feel very confident. We've got three foundations committed. If it takes a village, we got the right village to do it. The only concern I have is that our commitment to the public to be transparent and to provide plenty of notice, we didn't, this may be the exception and not the rule, that we didn't have this out a week ago so the public could look at it. And again, that will be our practice to try to make sure that the public has adequate access to all documents and all actions that the board take in the future. Hopefully, you'll forgive this one time, because I think the opportunity to open this Saturday is pretty compelling for everybody and the positive statement that we'll make to this community. So that's why we are looking at it this evening.
Can I explain a little bit what, Saturday, why Saturday?
Okay. The general analysis of the membership and as it relates to Evolutions is that when Evolutions closed, it was right at the end of October. The people we talked to, the members, didn't know what to do when Evolutions itself closed, and many of them didn't go out and sign one-year contracts with other clubs or go elsewhere to permanently leave. As I understand it, many of them signed a one-month, signed up for one month with the idea that they'd wait a month and then see what would happen. What I'm hearing back and the feedback we are all getting is that as December 1st comes, they're going to have to make a decision. Will they renew for a second month where they're at and then just decide to stay there and make it permanent? Or will they still hold out further to see if Evolutions will open? The key to the success on the business plan that's been put together is maintaining membership. So we've all taken a look at this, and we've worked feverishly to put it together on the basis that we've got to be open before the end of November. We have to be in a situation to where those members are aware that Evolutions is open and Evolutions is worth coming back to. If we wait until December, or we wait until as close to the first of the year, we may open at sometime after the first of the year, and there'll be nothing, I mean, nobody will come, and then you're going to have a losing proposition, and this district can't afford to have something that's losing money. So the quicker we get Evolutions open, the better off this community is. That's why we're moving so quickly, and that's why we've given it to the board in final form as quickly as we could. And by necessity, it's created a situation to where we're asking the board to approve this tonight so we can sign the agreement in final form tomorrow morning. We didn't put it in final form because we didn't know exactly what the district board would decide. So if you approve it tonight, my staff's going to have it ready, our staff, Joseph and mine, will have it ready tomorrow morning, and we can get the signatures of the board members under the circumstances. Because of recusal of Mr. Harrell, we'll remove his name from the signature itself. Are there any other questions or comments from the board members?
I'm just interested to see what the community has to say, should, from what you heard. Throw up your hands if you think we should approve this. Anybody think we shouldn't? I make a motion to approve.
6:00 AM.
Listen, I said 6:00 AM on Saturday.
He's the judge, you're the attorney. You want to...
I don't get to tell him that kind of...
We have a motion and a second, because we, if we are doing it fast, if anybody has a question, I'd like, I'd like to afford you the opportunity to ask that question before we take on a formal action. Anybody have a question or a comment?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
As far as membership fees, when hospitals have been closed, I have possibly a little less, when Saturday comes along, will it be something where we have to decide if paid, or will it be that week until the first, or how would that commence and will the fee be saying?
I believe it's going to be on the basis that, that part of November is going to be comp. I mean, there's going to be no charge for... Correct me if I'm wrong, okay? And then December will, from December on, it will be, and there's no intent, there's no intent that I see from anybody that fees will be any different than what they were. We're certainly not going to be in a position to where we're going to charge more or anything. We're trying to have, when the doors are open, we want everybody to feel like it's the same as it was when they just lost a month, and they put on a few pounds and have to work harder. As you can see, I have to worry about that.
Any other questions or comments?
Anything from the CEO and the CFO in regard to this contract? You approve of it and everything else? Any comment from them regarding it?
We've reviewed it, and there were no questions or objections. We've really been concentrating on the hospital.
Along that line, every step of the way, as I finished my draft, it went to Nikki Cunningham from the district's legal counsel. She made her comments, it came back to me. I made adjustments, it went back to her. And then after doing that two or three times, we finally were in a position to where we got it out to the different entities. Of course, I was working on behalf of the TISDF. We got it to the Hospital Foundation, then we sent it, and at the same time, we sent it to TLDC's attorney. And we actually made two pres, well, we had a presentation to the TLDC board, we had a phone conference with them also, we had two presentations to Tulare Hospital Foundation and answered all their questions, had input from each one of their attorneys, and each time, we went back to the board. So this thing's been scrutinized many times by more people than I can describe. And I'm tired, to be quite frank. I'd love to have a vote on portion of the video.
Let me reiterate what Dennis said. McCormick and Marso, the board's counsel, have been completely involved in this. We've been having weekly meetings, so it gets kind of expensive for them to have, to be in all our meetings, but I had a series of texts back and forth with our attorney today on this, so they are fully involved and have approved us to form this contract.
That's correct.
There are no other questions or comments? There's a motion on the floor to approve the contract with Evo Management Company. Quick, writing over this stuff. LLC for the lease of Evolutions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Next item on the agenda is discussion and consideration of Resolution Number 857, which terminates any and all authority previously granted ACCA to serve as agent in any capacity for Tulare Local Healthcare District and directing Tulare County regarding tax revenues. It gives authority to have our people be directly involved and represent us to the Tulare County taxing authority. Move for approval?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to see. Okay, the mic's acting up, so I'm going to turn it over to you, Larry, and let you be all right. If you could give us an update, the many meetings you're holding, I made a list of stuff today that is going on, and I got to 23, and then after that, I thought of about four more things that are going on, so these guys are pretty busy with rushing to get our hospital opened and opened the right way.
Thank you, Kevin. I sort of liken what we're doing to one of my pastimes, which I don't have a lot of time for, and that's whitewater rafting. You know, I can go down the river in two different ways. I can oar myself, or I can have a paddle team where everybody's contributed. And I'm getting too old to do the oars myself, so I really like the fact that we have a number of people paddling down those rapids at the same time. And that's the kind of management that we believe in, is participative management, that everybody's working. This project is big, and it's challenging, and it's complex, and we have a great team that's working on it. Dan, incoming CFO, is providing a lot of the financial background. So I'll give you a brief overview of where we are. I think the great news is, is that you probably saw last Friday that we advertised for employment, which is a great first sign in regards to reopening the hospital. There are two or three things that have to happen for the hospital to reopen. One is we have to file the applications to the state of California, including a disclosure of all the board members, disclosure of Dan and I, make sure we're not criminals, or we've done any heinous kinds of things in the past. So we need to file that. The second part of it is, is that we have to get ready for a California Department of Public Health survey. And then there are eight major areas of the hospital that will be reviewed by CDPH. And those are nursing, anesthesiology, the ones that you can identify with in regards to the hospital. In order to do that, we have to have people hired. And so this is really a hard-horse kind of balance that we've been doing for the last three weeks, especially when we do not have all the information, we didn't have all the information from ACCA, to be able to make an evaluation of where we are and where we need to go. Fortunately, we have received a lot of information from ACCA. We haven't received everything. Dan is busy, and hopefully next week, we will actually have our performa, our budget, to be able to say, "This is what it's going to take to open," and we're, so we can go to funders who are going to help us get started to say, "Look, here's where we are, here's what it's going to look like in a month, and here's what it's going to look like in six months, and here's what it's going to look like in a year." The very, very good news is, is that applications are coming in like crazy, and that's wonderful. The great news... You know, I hate to say, you know, it's like going to Italy for a day and knowing everything there is to know about Italy. So I apologize for some of the conclusions we may be coming to, but one of the foundations of any type of hospital or health district are the physicians. And one of the areas that we have found and discovered is that the physician force here has really eroded over a period of time. And when the physician's force erodes, your patients are going to follow those physicians, and they're not going to come back to the hospital. Well, I can tell you that we have physicians calling us every day wanting to come back, even those people who have been gone for a long time, and are very, very interested in coming back and being with the hospital. That is an incredible sign. And we're talking to the physicians about what can we do? What are the needs of the community? How do we create programs that'll meet those needs? How are they financially solvable and solid? And those are the kinds of things that we're going to be talking about at each board meeting. You're going to be getting financials each month in terms of the last month of where the hospital is and where the district is. So I've been in this position in many different districts, and that's the way it was done in every single district. And I was kind of surprised that it wasn't the same in this particular district, but in fact, there was quite a gap, from what I understand. So, but we can't vote on the way it was, somebody already did, but we can vote on the way it's going to be, and that's really exciting. So we have to hire individuals and get doctors in force for the reopening. And that's what we're doing right now. Next week, starting November 27th, we will be interviewing individuals. At the same time, Dan is going to be putting the budget together, taking it to funders to make sure that we get foundation, not foundation money, but seed money to be able to start, because we can't hire people without money. And so that's one, so it's all sort of balanced at the same time. And once we do that, we will be able to submit our application to CDPH and also schedule a survey. This is not one of these impromptu surveys. We can actually schedule the survey, so we'll be ready when they come. And we're having, we're getting a lot of tremendous support from existing staff. Don't ask me how and why, but we're getting, existing, we're getting a lot of support, and that is, that is terrific. So the other thing that we have to evaluate, and one of the frustrations we've had, is to be able to evaluate existing contracts, and what are the obligations, and what are the areas that we have to pay now in order to open? For example, Southern California Edison hadn't been paid, a number of vendors hadn't been paid. The insurance, we were on the phone from Fresno, we just drove back from Fresno at a meeting with funders, and Dan was on the phone with Beta Insurance. a meeting with funders, and Dan was on the phone with Beta Insurance trying to to line up something so that we will have insurance coverage on five o'clock tomorrow night. So this is how important it is. You can't go naked on insurance. One of the things that I can tell, two things that I'd like to share with you. One is that we do not want the district to go back to the way it was and look at, and do non-productive time, looking for dollars in order to make payrolls. That's not the way this district is going to, and that's not the way we do it. What we're going to be doing is getting the the hospital and the district in a sound financial situation because they're paying their bills, they're meeting their payrolls, they're developing programs, and they're solid. That's, I mean, it's that simple but that complicated. And so I wanted to tell you about that. The second thing that I want to share with you is, Dan and I go into some unusual places at times in regards to challenging hospitals, districts, nursing homes, and so on. And I have to say, in all the years that I've been in healthcare, this is the most cohesive community that I have ever encountered, given what your challenges are and given where you are. So I congratulate you for coming together and doing it. So if we have enough water this summer, I invite all of you to my raft and and to hold a paddle. Thank you very much.
Larry, I'm not sure I should ask a question when I don't know what the answer might be, but I know you were working on what was going to happen tomorrow at five and there, I've heard several people indicate there was an interest in, if you're not otherwise involved, on Thanksgiving Eve, the family events of people being present.
Well, I understand divorces are expensive in California, so, no, we we had everything lined up. We we met with the facilities director this morning, very early. We have also met with the HR director and we have a handoff. Dan is meeting with Alan Germany tomorrow morning to get final information and and handoff. At this point, we are assured, and we also have the information technology, IT department, all set up. Give you an example, just in talking and looking at one contract, we're going to be able to save sixty-five thousand dollars a month just in the IT contract. Now, when I say that, don't think that we're just coming in and cutting things, that that's not the way we do it. But we need to evaluate, compare contracts to the norm. And fortunately, our firm has a lot of that information and Dan has that information. So that's one of the things that we're going to do. As far as we know, and then we'll be on call, I don't live that far away, I live in San Jose, so so I can make it back fairly quickly. Dan lives in El Centro, if there is such a place, is there? By the way, we have a good time while we're doing it, so that's that's really important as, and I'd also like to thank Jan and the foundation for letting us block down in your conference room as we couldn't get into the hospital to do our work and really appreciate you letting us share your space. So I think we're all set for tomorrow and we will ensure that tomorrow, and we feel real confident that that's going to happen. You're going to have maintenance, you're going to have IT, you're going to have the pharmacy, you're going to have infection control, you'll have all of that at the hospital. That skeleton crew will continue.
Obviously, we don't know for sure what's going to happen at 5:01 on Wednesday, November twenty-second, when the contract is formally rejected by court, by court orders. I plan to be there and if you would like to join me, if everything works, let's have a victory walk through the corridors of our new hospital.
I'd like to know with the CFO and the CEO, when they're going to move this, Larry?
They're they're a turnaround group. They're they're supposed to fix everything and then get out of town. They've had great success in doing that.
We have a really good gym, I think. There you go.
Yes.
Is there a basketball court?
I don't know. I am going to the pool.
If the right Apple or Google person comes down my driveway in San Jose and makes me an offer, you never know.
We have, your house is eighteen hundreds? We have newer houses here.
We have an eighteen seventy-one house.
Where exactly will this take place, Lawrence?
In the Allied Building and...
Probably the Allied Building is where you want to start.
Okay, probably at the Allied Building.
Are there ghosts? As an employee, I have other employees asking me questions and just so that I can maybe pass that on, so they get them a little bit of ease as to know some of what's going on because we're, a lot of us, not sure. What was the delay on filing for the, is it the CPBF or H, with the state, the contract with the state? What was the delay in filing that? Did we have to wait for ACCA to hand over stuff to be able to file that?
Yes, some of the financial information that has to be a part of that application, I think...
That's why a lot of employees have been messaging me, asking me, like, do you know what the delay is for getting the approval from the state or why it's taking so long? And I was under the assumption it was because they didn't withhold the information, but I wanted to be clear if I passed on that information that that's the reason why we were delayed in being able to do that.
We are are moving as fast as we we can. I know that doesn't mean a lot. I, you know, the federal judge chastised us for trying to move so fast. And I I thought to myself, I'll take that complaint because we're trying to get the hospital open here.
Explain to them why we need you to move so fast.
The other part of it is that we have, but unable to hire employees, and in order to be able to open, we have to hire employees, and we haven't been able to give to the funders any information because we didn't have it. And that's the practical part of why it's taken so long, but we're very optimistic that it's going to open as soon as we can.
Yeah, that's just some of the stuff, some of us employees are just wondering kind of why certain things have, you know, taken a little bit longer to happen or if it was just because of them refusing to give information.
That's a good part of it. Yes, ma'am.
You can hand me a light back to him. I'm Melissa Waters. I worked at Tulare District Hospital for twelve years, night aid. My big question is, I was under the impression that ex-employees were not allowed to work at the hospital for two years, so has that been taken care of?
Don't worry about it.
Well, I am worried. I mean, I know you said I'm not worried, but I want to hear it from you.
The judge is right here, we can talk. Our our understanding is, is that if you term your employment, or even if you don't term your employment, that it's an at-will employment state, that you, that slavery is not there anymore and you can, you can go and employ wherever you want to. And it's also the two-year provision is not enforceable based on the way it's written.
We may want to hedge to that none of us are lawyers and that that is our best interpretation. The contract, contract that we had, the one-sided contract, indicated that we would not recruit our employees. And even though we don't think that's valid, we're trying not to make that an issue, that's why we haven't directly sent out notices to our employees, but, the ACCA employees, but as Larry indicates, they're getting the word and and we're getting applications. Yes, sir?
Yes, so tomorrow's going to be the last day, so most of the people that are on the payroll finishing will not have any insurance as of tomorrow, 5:01. So is there going to be offering Cobra to the ex-employees? Because at that point, we will not have no insurance after tomorrow, after 5:01.
It's my understanding as of today, talking that if you're an ACCA employee, they are trying to to avoid offering Cobra. I'm not, I'm not sure of the laws of how they can do that, but I think that's a real real issue right now. It's a very good concern. On the positive side, I did hear today that checks are prepared to go out tomorrow, being, Thursday being a payday, but a holiday, so tomorrow they should be ready. Yes, sir?
I was on the phone with health comp today and as of today, they were, health comp was notifying to cancel everything as of midnight tomorrow night, and it's up to the employer, the ACCA, whether or not to continue the plan. And ACCA told health comp to nix the plan.
No Cobra.
No Cobra.
That's, that's what I heard, but again, it's really, very disheartening that that they retreat the employees that they always said was positive. They're indicating if they close the, close the plan, it might be, it might be...
But if there's no employees, there's no plan.
I've been hesitating to call on the HR director, and she's raising her hand, so...
I know that ACCA does have an outside source, Nancy Erickson, that is working on that because they're checking with the company. If he chooses to close the plan, then there is no Cobra. But I believe his legal is still working on that as of earlier today. But if he chooses to close the plan, there will be no Cobra offered because the plan will close. So that's a choice he has to make.
I was called by health comp management today at about four o'clock. They called me to tell me because I was scheduled for major surgery. I had to cancel it.
Yeah, that is very disheartening that that action would be taken.
If they choose to out to honor it, then it could be, but it's a run-out.
I know that. For whatever reason, the the contract provided that the employees would all transfer to ACCA, so we're, we're without ability to affect that. Any, hate to end on such a downer when we've had a big meeting here. Any other questions or comments? Not any, any board matters? Any matters before the board? Anything you want to comment on?
Just one, one thing real quick. I want to stress this to Larry. You know, we've, we've had a lot of nice stuff said and I want to end on a good note. Tulare's strong, good idea, Jan. When hiring the employees, I want, I would prefer to hire on their professional merit and their ability. There's been talk about some that maybe cheerleading for ACCA or supported them. I really think that would be wrong to even consider that. Unless something interfered with their performance or their job, I, I really hope you would ignore pleas from the public to, you know, take some sort of action.
Okay, there is no closed session this evening. So just a reminder, our next meeting will be our adjourned regular meeting a week from tomorrow night at 6:30 PM in this room on November twenty-nine. Some of us will be in front of the Allied Building tomorrow at 5:01 PM, hoping for good things, hoping for that this Thanksgiving, we truly have as a community, something to be thankful for. And thank you all for your participation. We are grateful.